All this meeting of the City Council order, vote call please.
Alderman Niles, Schrader.
Here.
Teeter.
Here.
Tully.
Here.
Byer.
Here.
Brandle.
Here.
Lars.
Here.
Maki.
All the women Niles is, excuse this evening, at this time we want to take public participation. I mean, we're wishing to address the council, may do so, we ask that you please come to the podium and state your name and address and reason for appearing. Seeing no one, we'll move on next to our presentation from Nestle Purina Pet Care, and welcome Chris Johnson, Plan Manager from the Jefferson Facility, and Deb Ryanbow from Thrive Jefferson. Welcome.
Evening. You've got the slides up there?
Good.
So, I appreciate you giving a little bit of time today to talk about the resolution that we brought. I think some of you, not all of you, have been, a little bit in the loop, we've been talking about this concept probably a year and a half now, and it's a little bit of a disappointment, but we're pretty excited to move to where we've gotten with this. Over the last couple of years, we've been looking for opportunities for growth in the Nestle Purina, and we've been advocating pretty strongly to have an opportunity to do it here in this factory. And so I want to just give a little bit of background on the company, but then a little more specifics about the proposed expansion that we're looking towards right now. The next one. So, you know, the current factor right now is, we are owned by Nestle SA, it's our mother company. It's amazing how much pet food is made in the U.S. We have 20 different factories that are out there just in the U.S. alone, more than 20 right now, continuing to grow, employ over 10,000 people in North America alone. The factory here actually is the oldest one in the Purina family. The site that we're on right now, the original factory was built there in 1910, and converted to pet food in around 1948. So, that's a bit of pride for us, that it's been here as part of the community, part of the city for as long as it has, and it holds a special place in the Purina organization because of that as well. What we make is primarily three-ounce pet food, so if you're familiar with the small Fancy Feast cans, so some people get the Friskies or more tuna fish cans, and maybe those really small little three-ounce cans primarily. The main brands we have there are Fancy Feast, some you may have Pro Plan or Benefit for feeding dogs. So, some great products, and we think it's the best that's out there, we'll go against any competitors for that for sure. Currently, we employ about 250, and so I actually slid you over that right now, but we have about 250 people in the factory working every week. So, the project we've been working on is basically a line expansion, making similar products to what we make right now. It would increase our capacity by around 50%, and the, there's a pretty significant investment, these are fairly highly automated, large volume lines that we produce on, and so we talked about with the new investment on this one, it's about $100 million, and at least a creation of at least 75 full-time jobs. They're good-paying jobs, the average wage on these is a minimum of $25, so they create good living wages and can help for people in the area. We're looking to start the project here this year. You know, if you drive by the factory right now, you can see that there is work, preparatory work, that's already going on in anticipation of getting this approval, so that's not something that we're trying to hide, that we're actively working towards making this come to life already. But we're targeting that beginning of October timeframe, and would like to have product off the line by late in 2024. Supply chain issue, material issues, all those sorts of things are things that we're working through right now, but that's why our current construction timeline will be based on the initial end look that's been done. I do have to say, you know, while I'm here representing the company, I've also been, I think, a really good advocate for the community, for the city, within our organization. There's been a lot of really good work and partnership done by Dale, by Tim and the city administration, by Ben and the county administration, to put forth, I think, a really compelling business case for Purina to consider this project. So I, you know, before we go into further, I do have to thank the city for the work that's gotten us to this point, it's been really phenomenal, and I'm thankful for that. This is what you can see if you start to go back, it's just a kind of outline, if you aren't really familiar with our site, and we can just show what we're looking at here. Over on the left side of the screen is Riverview Drive, Main Street, we'll go, kind of go along the top, and the white boxes here represent our current footprint building. We are going to be putting in place, with this project, we've put in place a couple building expansions, a warehouse up here to kind of fill up that corner, some utilities rooms here, a lot of the project is internal improvements, putting in line using some space. Some of you have may have been familiar with the business, and those that around 2021, 2022, we used to make some dry cat food and dog food here as well. That production line was relocated at the time that Purina was purchased by Nestle. So, we're basically looking to try and utilize some of that vacated space from almost 20 years ago and build the factory again. So, what we've brought for the request is that you consider for approval, a resolution that we've worked on. There's two, really, two elements to it, one is the creation of a TIP for this project, which is the $2 million request in cost of property taxes over a 20-year period. The other is, there's a little bit of work right on the front side of Main Street, where to create the, for us to be able to build that warehouse out to our property lines there, we're looking to relocate that sidewalk back closer to the road and create some improvements for the city to be able to access that, so we can work on that. Those are the primary asks that we have with this resolution, and like I said, I think it's been a really great partnership at this point, and I thank you guys. Any questions that you may have for me?
Chris, where is the equipment manufactured?
It's all over the place, I would say. There is some equipment even that is manufactured as far as Europe, some of the equipment, but the vast majority, you know, Midwest is a great place for food manufacturing equipment, and it's not just food manufacturing, but also a lot of the capital investment comes from there. So, I don't have the full list, but there's stuff that, you know, a lot of our pumps, for instance, come from Lauterschau, Lauterschau punk. The label equipment make is made in Franklin, Wisconsin. So, there's a lot of Wisconsin, I'd say the vast majority is coming from Midwest U.S., though there is some that's probably coming from all over the place.
What's the production time on the equipment?
The production?
Yeah, the main banter time.
Oh, how long it takes to get it?
For placing an order to...
You want normal times, or you want, no? We have some lead times that extend out, the longest that I've heard right now is up to like 90 weeks on some stuff. That's probably a rough estimate. And on some stuff, it's very vanilla things that you think would be readily available that are hard to get, you know, particularly things like electrical equipment, right now this is tough to get. Not all of it is, but for some of that, some of that lead time, that's part of built-in some of that timeline for the construction based on procured equipment.
Is this new line, is it going to be comparable to line one, line two, line two being more, it generates more product than line one, is it going to be similar to line one or line two?
So, it's going to be, I would say, as far as, certainly between the two, yeah, certainly between in capability and in capacity, yeah. But very similar, very similar. If any of you guys have worked or been in our factory, you know, it's going to be making similar type of products.
Chris, one of the things we've chatted about collectively at this level is that it's a little bit tricky, because your addition work is work in the flood plain, always a little tricky, but I think your engineers, very craftily, you know, have figured out how to manage that and be able to get, you know, permanent approval in Madison.
Yeah. Dave, I think that was one of the early things that we investigated, this was one we were talking about a year ago, so many of you guys may have been involved in some of those conversations, to make sure that there weren't going to be some of these stumbling blocks as we got further into the design, to bet out what would be viable solutions to deal with that. We have long, maybe not so long memories to 2008, and, you know, what the river can do sometimes, whatever wants to do, that's something we definitely haven't been caught in.
Anyone else have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, Chris. Doug, did you have anything you would like to add from Thrive's perspective?
Just that it's been a long time in coming, hopefully, if he started working with them, what, it's been over a year?
Yeah.
Year and a half?
Yeah, a year and a half.
And we're extremely grateful that they're considering investing here in Jefferson. There's many opportunities that they had throughout the state, or throughout the country, excuse me, and it's really a big part to Chris and his advocacy in order to have that come here, so.
I'd act with that sentiment as well, thank you very much, Chris, and I hear you did a lot to impress on the incorporation of the value of this plant and being in this community. Thanks.
Okay, we'll move on to ordinance number 4-22, the ordinance amendments, section 265-4D9 of the Jefferson Municipal Code, to add an additional area for bidding parking between the hours of 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m., with certain exceptions.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Opperman, City of Jefferson ordinance number 4-22, whereas the City of Jefferson has a comprehensive plan regulating when and where its citizens may park within the City of Jefferson, and whereas the City of Jefferson has cause to be constructed a public parking lot located adjacent to Riverside Alley in the city to be known henceforth as Riverside Alley North Parking Lot, and whereas the common council has determined that it is in the best interest of the City of Jefferson to forbid overnight parking in the aforementioned Riverside Alley North Parking Lot, with certain exceptions. Now therefore, the common council does hereby ordain as follows, section one, section 265-4D9 of the Jefferson Municipal Code is amended to include the Riverside Alley North Parking Lot, parcels number 241-0614-0234057 and 241-0614-0234087, as an area in which no parking is allowed between the hours of 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. Section two, section one notwithstanding, the 16-mast Northwestern stalls located in Riverside Alley North Parking Lot are available for parking between the hours of 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m., and anytime subject to the time restriction set forth in section 265-4D2 of the Jefferson Municipal Code. Section three, the provisions of section 265-4G of the Jefferson Municipal Code are deleted in its entirety. Section four, this ordinance shall be effective on the date after its enactment and public application as required by law.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Maki, in discussion. Bill, you want to give us a summary of the affected areas, just so that everybody's clear?
Sure, this has been discussed at two previous meetings, there's several questions as far as what existing parking do we have, again, what we're referring to is essentially the large parking area to the west of Felton, which is the municipal parking lot. As part of the Riverside Alley project, we are paving that entire area, so that will be re-striped, to essentially, the plan was put 48 stalls in there. One amendment that I would ask if the ordinance approved tonight, one of the things when we were laying this out today, we're adding a large X in the southwest, or actually the northwest corner, there was one utility pole located at that corner that we had anticipated was going to be removed as part of the underground project, that is still in place, and I confirmed with Scott that it will remain in place. So, because of that location and the guy wires, I recommend changing the wording to, instead of the northern 16-mast stall, to the northern 13-mast stalls. So, this will actually be an area that won't be paved right around that area. Based on the discussion we've had previously, there hasn't been really a magic number as far as how many stalls are needed in there, so I really don't see any impact with that. But there has been discussion as far as whether or not this is the right location, or anything like that, whereas the additional public stalls that we have, overnight stalls, and again, this was really an attempt to be able to put that in, so what you had in front of you with the ordinance discussion has culminated off of that. And as far as schedule at this point, what I'm anticipating is that this entire area will be paved within the next week and a half. Once that's paved and striped, then we would need additional signage up documenting those little locations, so the PD is able to enforce those areas.
So, we're going to reduce the number of stalls for overnight parking from 16 to 13, I would need, or we would need a specific motion making that amendment, we would vote on that, and then the full ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I move to amend the ordinance to request 16 stalls with 13. It's been moved to make the amendment, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Byer, in discussion, any further discussion on that?
Yes. The blue are spots, which are 24-hour, the concerns with those is that there's often, especially the left-hand in the north, there's often broken glass, garbage, the trees overgrow it, there's a basketball hoop, there's basketballs, so it's not a safe place to put a car. Also with the south blue, it's a story below the parking lot above, and that garbage, cigarettes, glass get thrown over it, there were kids living over there, and they were throwing bicycles and everything over it. So, there's always been a concern with parking there. Also, I've been taking pictures at night, and as we can't use the lot at all right now, the, going up on the north side of Felton's, there's been nine cars parked there almost every night, including Felton's box truck. So, everybody seems to be parking up there, not off on the other streets, and so parking all the way down there by the railroad tracks is just a little confusing to me that that is where the parking is, when everybody seems to be parking on the east side, not the west side. And there was discussion about possibly changing the parking times against Felton's on that north side.
Okay, well, the blue areas are not going to be changed, but if there's a maintenance issue, then we'll take care of the maintenance issue.
Okay, can you put a net over it or something, so things don't get thrown over? I'm just saying those are very safe spots.
Anyone else? Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the amendment from 16 to 13 stalls on the western portion of the north parking lot there, please signify by saying aye as your name is called, no if you're opposed.
Alderman Schrader.
Hi.
Teeter.
Hi.
Tully.
Hi.
Byer.
Hi.
Brandle.
No.
Lars.
Hi.
Maki.
Hi.
Okay, six to one on the amendment, no, the ordinance number 4-22, as amended, add 13 stalls in the western location, is there any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of ordinance number 4-22, all, same as probably saying ayes your name is called, no if you're opposed.
Alderman woman Teeter.
Hi.
Tully.
Hi.
Byer.
Hi.
Brandle.
No.
Lars.
Hi.
Maki.
No.
Schrader.
Hi.
That is past five to two, thank you for your comments. Resolution, you know, I'm going to move resolution number 30 up to the next one, and I'll ask resolution authorizing a developer's agreement between the City of Jefferson and Nestle Purina Pet Care Incorporated, Alderman Schrader, Chris.
Mr. Mayor, this is resolution number 30, whereas Nestle Purina Pet Care Incorporated, the company desires to expand and improve its manufacturing facility located at 150 West Riverview Drive, Jefferson, Wisconsin 53549, the property, whereas, and whereas the company's investment in the project is anticipated to be a minimum of $100 million, add at least 75 full-time employees with an average starting wage of $25 an hour or more, and result in the addition of 25,000 square feet or more of new facility space, and whereas the expansion of the existing facility and investment in new equipment is anticipated to increase the company's manufacturing capacity and accommodate new production lines, which is anticipated to increase output volume by 30% or more, and whereas the city desires to encourage economic development and is open to grant certain financial incentives to do so, and whereas the city and the company have agreed to the scope and type of improvements and obligations needed and required for the project, and whereas the city believes that the project more fully described in the developer agreement and its approval in construction will stimulate economic activity and provide economic benefits to the city, and now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that it hereby approves and authorizes a developer agreement between the City of Jefferson and Nestle Purina Pet Care Incorporated regarding the expansion improvement project contemplated for property located at 150 West Riverview Drive, including the following City of Jefferson obligations. The city will take steps that are necessary for the creation of an industrial tax increment district that will overlay upon the company's existing facility located at 150 West Riverview Drive. The city will provide a cash TIP payment to the company on an annual basis from the property taxes generated by the project as reimbursement to the company for project costs, as defined by the Tax Increment Finance Statute and Project Plan that will be incurred by the company. The maximum TIP payment shall not exceed the sum of $2 million during the 20-year life of the tax increment district, and the city will collaborate with the company so the company is able to comply with the city's setback requirement for the project, including the partial relocation of Main Street, South Highway 26 right-of-way, which borders the property, and the relocation of sidewalk within the right-of-way at city expense. It further resolved by the common council that the mayor, city clerk, finance director, and city administrator are authorized to sign the developer agreement and any documents associated with this matter on behalf of the City of Jefferson upon the review and consent of the city attorney. Mr. Mayor, I move approval.
Thank you, it's been moved, is there a second? Second by Alderman Maki, in discussion? We heard a very just comprehensive description of the project, once again, we're grateful for the opportunity. Yes, we are. There are no other questions or comments? All in favor of resolution number 30, please signify by saying aye as your name is called, no if you're opposed.
Alderman Tully.
Hi.
Byer.
Hi.
Brandle.
Hi.
Lars.
Hi.
Maki.
Hi.
Schrader.
Hi.
Teeter.
Hi.
Please say it to Dallas, thank you. I feel like we should light out fireworks. Maybe light out the pedestrian bridge, and that'll be coming soon. All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to resolution number 24, tonight's consent agenda, Alderman Schrader, please.
Mr. Mayor, resolution number 24, the consent agenda, be it resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the consent agenda for July 19, 2022 is hereby adopted. A, vouchers payable for July 2022 in the amount of $819,843.54. Payroll summary for July 15, 2022 in the amount of $175,271.59. Council minutes from the July 5, 2022 meeting of the common council, and licenses as approved by the regulatory committee, operators licenses, there was one, liquor licenses, there were none. Mr. Mayor, I move approval.
It's been moved, is there a second? Alderman Teeter, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of resolution number 24, please signify by saying aye as your name is called, no if you're opposed.
Alderman Byer.
Hi.
Brandle.
Hi.
Lars.
Hi.
Maki.
Hi.
Schrader.
Hi.
Teeter.
Hi.
Tully.
Hi.
To Dallas, thank you. Resolution number 25, a resolution authorize hiring mega rentals for the local detour setup, Alderman Maki, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. City of Jefferson, resolution number 25, authorizing a higher, you just said that. Whereas, Wisconsin DOT has notified the City of Jefferson that the Main Street Bridge will be reconstructed over the approximately 10-month period, beginning on September of 2022, and whereas, the City of Jefferson is responsible for providing a local detour signage during this construction period, and whereas, the city engineer has proceeded proposals to sign a local detour route during the South Main Bridge reconstruction, and recommends the lowest qualified quote from mega rentals in the amount of $15,095. Now therefore, be it resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that herein approves the agreement to provide signage for the local detour route during the Wisconsin Department of Transportation reconstruction of the South Main Street Bridge at the cost of $15,095, to be paid out to the capital improvement fund. Be it further resolved by the common council that the city administrator is authorized to execute said agreement on behalf of the City of Jefferson after review by the city attorney. Mr. Mayor, I move for approval.
It's been moved, thank you.
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Brandle, in discussion? Bill, you want to just give a...
Sure, I'll give you the background on this. So, we'll state in the resolution is that DOT is taking care of the main detour route for the reconstruction of the Main Street Bridge scheduled for approximately 10-month period, starting in September of this year. That detour will utilize the bypass outside of the Jefferson, but the local detour is still the responsibility of the city. So, I've worked with PD on this, and the route that we've chosen on this as the Main Street detour is essentially utilizing Collins Road, Wisconsin Drive, and Easter Sean Street to be able to get back to Main Street. Now, I requested three proposals for this detour, we received two proposals, one was not interested in bidding or providing a quote. The lowest was mega rentals at a cost of 15,000, just over $15,000, and that covers us for the entire 10-month period. Couple notes about this detour, currently the intersection of Wisconsin Drive and Collins Road will be changed to a four-way stop to be able to control traffic coming in on Highway W, slow traffic at that location, that's a pretty high residential area with the apartments in that area. Also, at the intersection of Wisconsin Drive and Easter Sean Street, northbound traffic won't be allowed to make a right-hand turn onto Sean Street. Again, that is for traffic control. Anybody that's been out there for the car show or anything like that, trying to make a left-hand turn in certain areas at the lawn back of the south, we've made the determination to make that right-hand turn only. Also, the 100 block, that first block just south of Sean Street on Wisconsin Drive will be signed as no parking for the duration, because that is a narrow portion of the road, it widens out once you get past that block. So, that'll get traffic back to Sean Street. As I said, there's a local detour for Main Street, all areas on the west side of Jefferson, south of Sean Street are still going to be accessible without any additional detours. But one modification that I am requesting is going to be add signage at the intersection of Wisconsin and Collins, for any westbound traffic on Highway 18 to direct itself on Highway W back to the main detour using the bypass. This will keep certainly truck traffic and heavy traffic volumes out of the residential streets west of Wisconsin Drive. So upon approval tonight, what I would be just waiting for is a start date from DOT. I requested that. Right now, the only thing we know is that it's going to be starting after September sixth. We are anticipating it's going to start sometime in September, but I'm still waiting on that information. And then overall, it's going to be about a ten-month project. So the good thing is that the construction won't start until after our downtown areas are opened up. So we get congestion out of one area, we're going to another one. But that's the information I provided from DOT. So this is essentially the portion of the detour the city's responsible for.
And Chief, you've done consultation with Joe and the Streets Department on this.
Yes. Bill and I have discussed it. I concur with his plan because of the issue with, you know, the truck traffic. You know, it's important to recognize that it's a Main Street detour. And the trucks still can come off of West Sean Street to get down to parents and the business center, things like that.
Anyone have any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of resolution number twenty-five, authorizing hiring of mega rentals for the local detour setup, please signify by saying aye as your name is called. Hold your post.
Alderman Brandon.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Maki.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Fire.
Aye.
Resolution number twenty-six, a resolution of acceptance of new excavation work in the right-of-way permit. Alderman Teeter, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City of Jefferson. Resolution number twenty-six. Whereas the city of Jefferson requires any resident contracted by the city department to complete a right-of-way permit form for any work or excavations to be completed within the city right-of-way. And whereas the city engineer has completed an updated excavation work-in-right-of-way permit form and cost recovery agreement with new fee structure. And whereas the city staff and council has reviewed and approved the new documents for implementation on all future projects. Now therefore be resolved, the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, adopts the excavation work-in-right-of-way permit right and cost recovery agreement along with associated fees presented herein. I would so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Tully. Bill, can you say recap, please?
Sure. This also has been discussed at several committee meetings. Currently, the city has a excavation work-in-the-right-of-way form. But one, it's very outdated, it's very simplified. It's also a free permit. And it was time, based on some of the developments that are coming into the city, we're starting to see more of an interest in the community. Fiber optic projects and like that. So the right-of-way permit that I've developed here is based on a review of several municipal areas. It's kind of a combination of that. But it is a more complete document that provides additional information to city staff to be able to track projects. It's more complete in that regard. As far, it also creates a fee structure. Currently, we still anticipate certain things like dumpsters and small sidewalk replacements. Those are still exempted for the resident. We're not trying to create undue burden on residents for small projects. This is also exempt of any other things. Passing those costs on to other city departments. The second part of this document also is a cost recovery agreement, which for large projects allows the city to be able to recover costs for any consulting fees, as-built, things like that, that we currently don't have in place. So this is kind of a long-term, long time coming. There will be a learning curve for, probably less of a learning curve for businesses. We Energy, things like that, those are probably our, probably our main ones for gas. So we'll be contacting them about this. And then as far as residents, I'll be going through with the mayor in the office to explain this to any residents that need assistance to provide this. But I think this will be in place for a long time coming and certainly aid us for tracking projects down the line.
Any questions, Bill?
Did a good job, Bill.
Bill, is Jefferson electric utility considered a city entity for this purposes?
Yes.
So that they would fill out the permit, but not be the.
Correct. Correct. Yep, absolutely.
Anything else? Hearing none. All in favor of the approval of the resolution, please signify by saying aye as your name is called. Hold your post.
Alderman Lars.
Aye.
Maki.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Fire.
Aye.
unanimous. Thank you. Resolution number twenty-seven, a resolution authorizing, excuse me, approving the specifications and standards of utility and street construction. Alderman Tully, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Operman, City of Jefferson, resolution number twenty-seven. Whereas the city of Jefferson has completed comprehensive specifications and standards for utility and street construction. And whereas, this document shall be used for all future developments that occur within the city of Jefferson that are located within public right-of-way or which utilities are dedicated to the city of Jefferson. And whereas, city staff and council have reviewed and approved the document for implementation on all future projects. Now therefore be it resolved, the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, adopts the specifications and standards for utility and street construction presented herein. I would so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Alderman Maki. Bill?
Again, this is kind of similar to the reasoning that we had set the right-of-way permit. This has been a long time coming. These are specifications and standards that were developed by all the city departments. They go from anywhere from how manuals are laid out to the type of materials that the city uses, very specific. As we have more developments come into the city, a document like this certainly streamlines the process for developers because it lays out to them exactly what the city's expectations are. So it cuts down on their design time, it also cuts down on the city's review time. Essentially standardizes exactly what we want our streets, our utilities to look like in all future developments work consistent throughout the community. So if this is adopted tonight, this is a document that we would end up supplying to any developers looking to come into the community and basing the design on these standards.
Any questions, Bill, or comments? Well, I have a chance to look at these and weigh in on them. If there are no other questions or comments, all in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye as your name is called. Hold your post.
Alderman Maki.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Fire.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Lars. Aye.
Resolution twenty-seven is passed unanimously. Thank you. Resolution number twenty-eight, a resolution amending the city's official traffic map. Alderman Fire, please.
Honorable Mayor, council members and citizens, city of Jefferson, resolution number twenty-eight. Resolution amending the city's official traffic map. Whereas the city of Jefferson, the city owns and manages a system of public roads and located within the city. And whereas the city pursuant to two six five dash two of the city municipal code also maintains an official traffic map that shows the location of all such public roads. And whereas the city has recently made significant improvements to one of the city's public roads, namely Riverside Alley. And whereas the common council has determined that the public welfare would be better served to make the aforementioned Riverside Alley a one-way street. Now therefore, be it resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson that the following change of the city's official traffic map is hereby made. Riverside Alley shall henceforth be a one-way street northbound commencing at the north right-of-way of West Dodge Street extending north for point one seven miles to the southern boundary line of tax parcel two four one dash zero six one four dash zero two three four dash zero five seven. Be that the city's official traffic map shall be changed accordingly. See that pursuant to two six five dash nine of the city's municipal code, the police department shall procure erect and maintain official signs giving notice of the changes set forth above. I so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Tully. And Bill, I'm going back to you again, please.
What you're looking at on the screen is the city's official traffic map. It's a little tough to see. I'm going to try to move the cursor so you guys can kind of see it here. But in the light blue, the orange colors are essentially all all two-way streets throughout the community. The map has been updated to reflect Riverside Alley as being one-way. That's the indication in the blue on this one. As far as the progress of this, a portion of the alley has been started to be paved. At the completion of the paving, we will have additional signage. The city, the public works department, they're already obtained and just waiting for the street to be completely paved. And then at that point, we will be marking that as one-way. We'll also be putting something out on Facebook and likely Daily Union indicating that this is one-way. But this is kind of a long time coming. Certainly for the improvements with Riverside Alley to make that safer. One additional thing was once that is signed, we will notify our recycling, John's Recycling of the modification. I've already given them a heads-up that the change is coming. So once that is done, they will update their rules accordingly.
So do they have any questions, Bill?
So when you turn onto that, they just walk there. So when you turn off Dodge, you'll go in there and it'll just go the one-way. And you can either go, turn towards where Wyandotte Roses or the other way. When you get past.
Wyandotte Roses on.
Milwaukee Street.
Yeah. At East.
Yeah, essentially the signage, we won't have much for signage northbound because you can travel northbound. But for example, at East Milwaukee Street here, if you are going either eastbound or westbound, there'll be signage at this location indicating do not enter. So you're like.
Yeah, but there's like that little alley type thing where you go past. You know, you go by the back of the building that focused on used to be.
Over here?
Yeah.
This is Riverside Alley here. This is the alley that's here.
The blue? Oh, I'm looking at that big hunk of blue over there.
This?
Yeah.
Oh, no, that's the top of BP.
Okay.
No, we're referring to Riverside Alley essentially from Dodge Street.
All the way up there.
To this point.
Okay.
At this point, this will be two-way traffic. It still lies alone.
Looking at that big blue.
Okay.
All right.
Just clarifying.
All right. Okay. That makes sense. That makes a lot more sense. Because the one they go all the way to Maryland is that essentially.
No, it's going to stop, it's going to stop right at this location essentially just to the south of Phelps. So if you're coming down, so if you're coming down Mechanics Street, you can still go in either direction here. You can either go northbound or southbound to get access to all of the parking stalls there.
And at the terminus there, there'll be a do not enter sign coming.
Correct. Correct. Yep, absolutely.
We're going to have some sort of signage until we go down a half a block from the other one, along the road track?
We'll have some arrows on the parking stalls.
Designate that that's the way if you want to go south.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution number twenty-eight, please signify by saying aye as your name is called. Hold your post.
Alderman Schrader.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Fire.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Maki.
Aye.
Teeter. It's unanimous. Finally, the resolution number, city of Jefferson, resolution number twenty-nine. A resolution authorizing a contract for the Milwaukee Street Bridge lighting installation. Alderman Maki, please.
Thank you, Mayor Operman, City of Jefferson, resolution number twenty-nine. Whereas the city of Jefferson intends to light the Milwaukee Street pedestrian bridge with color-like, color-changing light options and solicited quotes from contractors interested in completing the installation for the Milwaukee Street pedestrian bridge lighting project. And whereas the scope includes installation of twenty-four lights, junction boxes, control panels, conduit, and other associated assets. Said items to be purchased directly by the city of Jefferson. And whereas the city has received whereas the city received a total of one quote from interested contractors with the lowest qualified quote being Jefferson Current Electric Inc. in the amount of twenty-four thousand, six hundred. And whereas the city engineer reviewed the quote and recommends the award of contract to Jefferson Current Electric Inc. Now therefore be resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that it herein approves this Jefferson Current Electric Inc. quote for the Milwaukee Street pedestrian bridge lighting in the amount of twenty-four thousand, six hundred. Be it further resolved by the common council that the city administrator is here unauthorized and directed to execute a contract or document associated with the above action on behalf of the city of Jefferson upon the review of the consent of the city attorney. I so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Teeter. And Tim, can you give us a brief discussion that we shared earlier this evening?
Surely. Retaining an electrician to install the lighting fixtures is really the last planning piece that the city council need do before the project is undertaken. Previously, the city council has authorized the expenditure once to order the fixtures. Others, twenty-four of them, twelve on each side of the of the bridge to be placed. Tonight's action allows us to hire the electrician to install the system. As the resolution that was read discusses, the city will be purchasing approximately ten thousand dollars worth of materials, conduit, wiring, things like that. Our goal is to undertake the project or to have the electrician undertake the project in August of this year with completion sometime scheduled for September. Last thing I would mention is due to the generous contributions of a number of people, the funds have been raised from the community, both private residents and also companies needed to pay for this project. And those funds currently exist in some at the Jefferson.
Does anyone have any questions, Tim, regarding the bridge lighting project? So the question here that we're tasked with considering tonight is to award the contract for the electric work installation. And that would be done by Jefferson Current Electric. If there are no questions or comments, all in favor signify by saying aye as your name is called. Hold your post.
Alderman Teeter.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Fire.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Maki.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. We look forward to that and celebrating the reason for the vote. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So move.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Lars, second by Alderman Schrader. A voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.